Okay, welcome, everyone. We will call to order our Committee of the Whole meeting today and start by recognizing that we're holding our meeting on the unceded territories of the Sashat and Hoopacchessit First Nations. We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any late items to be added by committee members? Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple of questions for staff, one to do with lifeguards at the pool and the other one is to do with waste management and a garbage truck.
We'll add those to the agenda under question period and then we'll do that before questions from members of the public. And Counselor Douglas.
Thank you. Just one item that I'd like to bring up for discussion about methods we might consider introducing to make this particular Committee of the Whole format a little more or a little less formal, a little more informal.
Great, we'll add that to the agenda under new business. Okay, any other items? Not seeing any items from our corporate officer.
None from me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, then would somebody like to move approval of our agenda as amended? Moved by Counsel Solder, seconded by Counsel Dame, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. And we have minutes from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on February 6, 2023. Somebody like to move adoption?
Moved to adoption.
Moved by Counsel Solder, seconded by Counsel Dame, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. We have no delegations today, so we'll move right into unfinished business. And one item today, City of Port Alverney, 2023 to 2027 Financial Plan Bylaw Number 5075. Andrew.
So, as you see, I'm going to sit from here tonight because I'll be scrolling through the financial plan. Tonight is the night where we can start to look at the financial plan and just try to get some sense of, especially with the newer councilors, of where things are at and create some understanding. You know, we just went through an Audit Committee meeting with a few new members and, you know, it was clear that there's some things that we need to understand and take the time to get into, so tonight we can start to have those discussions and allow the committee here tonight and council to improve their understanding of the financial plan. So with the cancellation of the February 21 meeting, the schedule that we had proposed had gotten shifted backwards. So looking at the meeting for the Committee of the Whole tonight was originally scheduled to be our E-Town Hall. With that, we just bumped that back for another two weeks to allow council tonight to have the opportunity, the committee to have the opportunity to undertake that understanding of the financial plan and have some input from the public here also with that opportunity that is always available to the public with our openness. But tonight, you know, we can go through the financial plan, scheduling that 20th meeting for that E-Town Hall, and then delaying that second reading to the 27th of March. With that, the 11th was originally the date that we had proposed for the adoption of the financial plan, understanding that May 15th is the deadline to complete the bylaw for both the financial plan and taxation. So with that, the tax rate bylaw would be introduced on the 24th of April if council supports the final adoption of the 2023-2027 financial plan. So with that, I'm just going to bring up the staff report and kind of walk through that with council or the committee story. So when we went through the financial plan back in early February, a month ago now, we went through the financial plan in sections. So what we'll do tonight is we'll just go through in the different sections at a high level, and when we go through that section, if the committee would like to have a look and look at any specific items within there, that'd be the great time to look at that. That section, obviously with the new collective agreement that was in place with the E-division With that, one question that was proposed, what is 1% of the financial plan as far as contract that we have with the RCMP, that is now fully costed into the financial plan an increase this year? and that also includes the new position that we created through IT and another halftime And that's about $256,000. position that's spread across both IT and the RCMP, and that's landing in that section So with that, we are currently sitting at the 8% increase for the financial plan. of the financial plan. With the RCMP, we budget for 32 members of the 34 that we have in our contract, understanding This is the proposed increase over last year's financial plan. Council has the ability to look at the line items, make changes as they see fit, but tonight that the utilization of that position or those positions are normally not fully utilized. we can take that input and bring back additional information if required. So with that, there is that usual discount that we have, so we don't budget for 34 every So when we look at the city legislative and administrative functions, there is approximately year. It enables us to budget more reflective of what we actually incur in that line item. a 9.24% increase year over year. Part of that increase includes the information systems position that we discussed and the The Fired Administration section, this is an area that we saw the realization of a asset management position. new collective agreement this past year, and that includes the cost for that up to 2021. There's also increases to IT and hardware and software and retaining, returning to the full role as the CAO because in the previous year we reduced the amount anticipating With that, there is the increases for 2022 that are anticipated within the financial plan, and those are included in this year's financial plan. that we did not have that role in place. So if there's anything that council would like to look at or the committee, we can Building Inspection, also another section of the financial plan that we see an overall look at that section of the financial plan. increase of 51%, but with that, we are realizing full recovery of that service, and that's
Just put your hands up if you have questions.
one of the few services that we provide at the city that provides full recovery. Animal Control, there was no increase. Looking at the Public Works and Administration, there is a project management role that we have in the financial plan that we're seeking council's approval for, and with that, this new position will be spread across the General Fund, the Sewer Fund, and the Water Fund, understanding a lot of these works that this position will undertake and oversee will be related to the project management that's related to capital infrastructure, and usually that includes the sewer and water. Public Works, Storm and Roads, there is a decrease in that, but understanding there were some carryforwards from the prior year. With solid waste collection, there is a decrease, but that has to do with some decrease in the IRF contribution in this current year, and the average single-family residential cost still remains at one of the lowest on the island at $180 for a single-family residential home. Development Services, we do see an increase. We're doing a lot of work with the OCP still, the DCC and the zoning bylaws. Economic Development, so that is a position where we see a position rolled out of that area, moved into the Development Services line items, so that's a shift that happened. Even though it's going down, there is an increase overall in that financial plan, but it's just that impact of that position moving from economic development to Development Parks and Recreation, there is a one new full-time position in Parks Maintenance included in the financial plan. With that, the overall increase is at 8.77%, and we are returning to the level of services that we did provide prior to the pandemic. And then Museum, McLean's Mill, with that, we do see a decrease in the financial plan currently for the McLean's Mill contract, moving from 150 to 140 in the financial plan, and that was the amount that was presented to council in this past budget year in 2022.
Counsel Douglas.
Thanks, Andrew. I just wanted to make sure I understood the, like, in each section you have there the percentage of increase or decrease, so that applies strictly to that sector, if it's Parks and Rec or the library, for example. Is that my understanding right?
Yeah, Madam Chair. So when we look at the financial plan, what we have is the different sections within there, and we are rolling everything up to look at each section depending on what's going forward for general administration, legislative, and that's where we see the general government services roll up for that section. And the same with Police Protection, we roll that section up, not going line by line, but just sections of the financial plan.
Yeah, okay. So what I was wondering is if, can we go back to the original that you had up there? Thanks. So just to pick one at random, say solid waste collection, there it says 11.22%. So does that mean, is that based percent increase over the norm over a number of years or strictly the previous year? Because I'm just thinking of COVID and that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Madam Chair, with the solid waste section, that is what was had over last year's budgeted amount. So that is what we had in the prior year, and the decrease for solid waste is 11.22%.
Thanks. So what I was getting at is if we had a decrease in the budget due to, say, the pandemic, then that increase is really not necessarily based on what the normal expenditure we would have had, say, four years ago, or that's what I was trying to get at. Like, the increase might partially be due to going back to normal activities.
So, Madam Mayor, with the solid waste component, that is something that we saw a new program be put in place in 2021, September 21, 21, and we're just solidifying the cost of providing that new service. So in the prior year, there might have been additional works that we normally don't do in the normal operations, but with this, this is returning to a level that we feel covers the cost of providing that service, so.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Counsel Solder.
Just a quick question regarding the decreases in that. That's not just for 2023, that's for the next, that's throughout this whole five-year budget? Or is it just for 2023? Do you know what I mean?
Madam Chair.
As an example, McLean's Mill, right? It's 140,000, you had mentioned on here, but I thought it was on 2023, it's going to be 150, and then it goes down in increments.
Madam Chair, with the McLean's Mill, the presentation that was brought forward by the Chamber of Commerce last year provided a 150 in the 2022 year and then decreasing $10,000 per year for that contract. That was the last request from the Chamber. We still have to get a new agreement with the Chamber, and that is currently in process, but if there's any change from that, the Chamber would come back to the city to ask for any increase.
Yeah, so council, I think an important note is that the document that Andrew's reviewing right now is just a summary of information. If we want to look at specific, you know, how something will change over time, then we can look at that in the full financial plan, which is attached to the agenda as well. And Counsel Douglas, I think you make a great point about, you know, that some of these are a decrease from COVID years. We can also look back, all of our five-year financial plans are available on our website. And then, of course, Andrew does have some notes that, you know, included in this summary that do say decrease or reduction back to pre-COVID service levels or increase. So there's a few of those in there, so I think Andrew's just tried to really point out differences here and changes to give us an idea, but we can get the full level of detail if we're looking for it in the five-year financial plan or previous ones. Counsel Solder.
Actually, just, actually. Andrew, just to say, I just looked through it, and I was looking at 2022 and thinking it was 2023, so I stand corrected.
All right. So if there's any questions about any of the expenditures, now might be a good time to look at those. So I open it to the committee to see if there's any questions that they have about line items in the financial plan.
Okay. Counsel Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I did submit a plethora of questions to the Finance Department throughout this week, and I appreciate Director McGifford for taking those on. May, is this the time, would this be the right time to throw those out there to you, Director McGifford?
Yeah, Madam Chair, through to Counsel Mealy. Yeah, I think I'm prepared to answer the questions that you provided, and I appreciate that. It's helpful to get the information at the meeting, and by all means, if you don't want to ask the numerous questions, we can put those all on a Q and A if you feel it's adequate, but I'll leave that up to the committee to make that decision.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll just go through the lines, and so I've attached the line, what they are, what the percentage is usually, and then the questions. So first one is line 21229, it's Other Financial Management, up 40%. Can I just get an explanation of what that is to start?
Certainly. Madam Chair, with that line item, what we've done in the past couple of years is shift the information technology software costs from IT to each department that is incurring those costs to better reflect the cost of providing the service for those functions within the city. So with that, about 75% of that increase is accountable to that shift from IT to the software within financial services. The other requirements that we do need to undertake in there is the asset retirement obligations. It's a public sector accounting standard that we have to meet for the 2023 year end, so we anticipate doing some consulting work for that. And there is some other memberships that are within that line item, but essentially that's what is undertaken in Other Financial Management, is the consulting costs, the software, and memberships.
Next question would be line 21259, Other Common Services, up 8.79% to $530,000. Can I get an explanation of Other Common Services, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair. So in Other Common Services, it is the city phone lines that we have, those are the internet costs, the cable costs, and this is approximately 40% of those expenditures. We also have other office costs such as recycling, shredding, office supplies, that's about 27% of that line item. This is where our reconciliation funding also lands, so we do put $50,000 a year in that fund to work with our reconciliation requirements through the year. There's postage, there's IRF contributions for our telecommunications in there, and other small items such as corporate memberships, advertising, small rentals make up the rest. So that's essentially what Other Common Services is.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that, especially, well, you had me at phone and internet going up anyway, so. Line item 21925, Council Travel and Development is up 29%. Is this merely because we have new council and we have more travel and development for the new councilors, or is this any planned travel for outside of British Columbia?
Madam Chair, through Counsel Mealy, what this is, is that additional training. Yes, it is, just to support the new council, there's additional amount in there, but we are reflecting the costs of undertaking UBCM, AVICC, and FCM, and for the most part, I believe all travel is within Canada, but travel expenses are higher, and we anticipate bringing forward an updated travel policy to the council so that it reflects the cost of actually travel for per diems and mileage moving forward, so.
Thank you, and just to add to that, assuming we budget based on our current policy for things like FCM where it's mayor and one counselor rather than for the whole council to attend, so assuming we don't direct differently, we're budgeting based on our policies.
That's correct, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Next question, line item 22160, Police Building Maintenance. It's up 34%. I was on council when we built that building, so it's up 34% building maintenance. Is there anything scheduled that we need this year for the police station?
Madam Chair, with Police Maintenance Budget, we are looking at some power washing that needs to be done. The buildings have some power washing that needs to be done on the upper level. Duct work that was done in the past, this past year has increased the cost, and we are seeing more repairs and maintenance with the building as it is aging, so we are experiencing higher levels of repairs and maintenance on that facility.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next line item would be line number 22926, Building Inspector Vehicle Up 176%. It's only over to $10,000, but what is this cost increase, and does this include a bigger IRF contribution?
Madam Chair, that is a bigger contribution because we are adding a second vehicle. We added a second building inspector due to the demand on that service, and we are looking at the additional vehicle with the IRF contribution and looking at the fuel costs that we've experienced in the past year. It's up significantly, and then those are also allocated to the increases in that line item.
Thank you very much, and I totally agree. Fuel costs, insurance costs, I totally understand that. Line item 23138, Shop Overhead, for the City Works, I believe, I didn't put that down, but I believe the City Works, up 33% to over $100,000. Can we have an explanation of what the shop overhead exactly entails, and is it necessary?
Madam Chair, with shop overhead, what we see there is our regulatory requirements as far as crane inspections, there is coveralls that we do supply, there is air, there's different shop supplies that aren't allocated to specific projects, so we do have project accounting, and each piece of equipment is tracked based on how much time staff work on that, so it is allocated based on that. But if there's no allocation of time for staff or due general training, maintenance, it would be allocated to shop overhead. And I, you know, from staff's perspective, this is needed, and it's reflecting the cost of providing service in the City of Port Alverney.
Absolutely, and totally understand. Line item 23264, Traffic and Railroad Signals, up 146%. We've gone from $10,000 to $25,000. Are these scheduled replacements or any specific signs that we are replacing?
Madam Chair, with the sign, if you look at the capital projects, anything that we need to replace would be in our capital side. This is maintenance. So operational costs, 45% of that is for hydro costs through the year. Maintenance contractors makes up approximately another 45%, and there's a small allocation of about 10% of staff wages for that line item. And there isn't any major project, it's just the annual ongoing maintenance, and that's reflecting the costs that we've incurred over the past couple of years.
If I could just ask a follow-up question on that one. Noting that we budgeted around $10,000 in 2022 but spent $26,000, is that representative of what recent prior years have been as well, or is 2022 an out-of-the-norm year?
Reviewing that line item, Madam Chair, we looked at, I can't recall what this line item was specifically in 2021, but looking at the costs incurred, in all likelihood, these are costs that have occurred annually. Looking at just regular upkeep of that, those traffic signs throughout the city, so.
Thank you. I know over the last few years, we've been trying to budget more based on actuals rather than prior year budget, so assuming that that is just continuation of that, but I wanted to clarify. Thank you, Counsel Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next one, line 23333, excuse me, I'm losing my voice from the weekend here, Storm Sewer Lift Station, up 751%. Is this part of the Sewer Lagoon project? And I apologize, of course, I'm a little new around council, right? So explanation needed if we could just, and I might swing back to that one eventually, so, but, yeah, thank you, sir.
So just to be clear and for the public watching, with the Storm Sewer Lift Station, that line item is all based on repairs and maintenance that are done within the service. It is the wages that are incurred to provide that service, and looking at the past year and the previous year, it was up quite a bit higher in the prior year, but it looks like there was a major rebuild. So with that, the expense line item reflects what we as staff have felt would be the cost for that service. So that's why it has gone up, and it should reflect that moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Next question, 27225, line item 27225, Parks Vehicles Equipment Maintenance and Repair, up 43%. Are there any specific major projected repairs in that to have a 43% increase?
Madam Chair, with that one, when I reviewed the expenditures, it looks like its fuel costs have gone up as a component of that, that accounted for probably about $8,000 of the increase over the year for parks maintenance, but beyond that, it looks like it's regular maintenance. We do have staff that work on our equipment and repair and maintain it, so their wages are also allocated to the repairs and maintenance of any equipment. And as I mentioned earlier, project accounting provides us the true cost of providing that level effort in those line items, so that reflects what staff has brought forward for the financial plan.
Thank you, sir. Line item 28220, it's been a while, but can I just get an explanation of transfers to general capital reserves?
Yeah, that's a great question. With capital, so we do use fund accounting. With that, our general fund and taxation, if we do, even though it's a general service and not a water or sewer service, we will transfer these funds to perform capital works, and with capital, it's in a separate fund. So what we are doing when we do have that in the financial plan for the general operating budget, this is taxation from the current year going into a capital project, and then if that project isn't, and we'll talk about reserves shortly here with the Deputy Director, but moving forward, if we do have capital assigned, that capital, you know, if council agrees, would be maintained in that reserve for that same purpose moving forward, to be consistent. So with that, that is taxation this year to provide capital projects in the current year.
Thank you, sir. Next one's a little bit right up my alley, so I went through the vehicles for replacement and what's scheduled. So it says, Replace 2008 Ford Ranger 4x4 Pickup Number 627, and the amount to replace that truck, I budgeted, I believe, is $83,000. I'd love to know what we're going to plan on buying with that, and just for example, for people who may not know, so I work at the Ford dealership, there's a brand-new 2022 Ford F-150 long box Lariat Hybrid there for $83,000. So if you'd like a new F-150, I got one for you, but I'd like to hear, sorry, I'd like to hear what that's budgeted for, what the idea is behind that.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, with any capital project, our staff would review what's required for the position, undertake an estimate for that position, and then usually do an RFP or tender to get the best solution to our problem. So that allows not only the local Ford dealership, but other dealerships in town to provide a solution to our problem, or it could be external. So we're really looking for best value for taxpayer dollars, and with this one, I, you know, I leave it up to the staff to do their best to bring forward a recommendation, and it might be a Ford product, but I don't know at this time, and I think we let the market tell us what is the best solution to our problem.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. It just, yeah, and it doesn't have to be a Ford, I understand that, that's just more of a joke than anything else. I do have just a couple more that have come up just recently, and I'll try my best to be like with these, but, so there was a report that, from the Audit Committee, thank you to the Audit Committee, that the, there was leftover, not leftover, but anybody, I apologize if that's not the way, surplus on the roads that wasn't used last year. Is that, how would I phrase this question? I guess it- for people who may not know, so I work at the Ford dealership, there's a brand-new 2022 Ford F-150 long box lariat hybrid there for $83,000. So if you like a new F-150, I got one for you. But I'd like to hear, sorry, I'd like to hear what that's budgeted for, what the idea is behind that.
Yeah. So Madam Chair, with any capital projects, our staff would review what's required for the position, undertake an estimate for that position, and then usually do an RFP or tender to get the best solution to our problem. So that allows not only the local Ford dealership, but other dealerships in town to provide a solution to our problem, or it could be external. So we're really looking for best value for taxpayer dollars. And with this one, I, you know, I leave it up to the staff to do their best to bring forward a recommendation. And it might be a Ford product, but I don't know at this time. And I think we let the market tell us what is the best solution to our problem.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It just, yeah, it doesn't have to be a Ford. I understand that. That's just more of a joke than anything else. I do have just a couple more that have come up just recently. And I'll try my best to be like with these. So there was a report that, from the Audit Committee, thank you to the Audit Committee, that the, there was leftover, not leftover money, I apologize if that's not the way, surplus on the roads that wasn't used last year. Is that, how would I phrase this question? I guess what I'm asking is, is it, do we have too much work for the amount of city workers we have right now? I guess that's really the question. Do we have just too much work right now for the amount of city workers we have?
Madam Chair, with that, I think, you know, we only have limited staff to do the work. We did do a capital project on Sixth Avenue this past year. And that took the time away from doing some of the work that we would do in operations. So our equipment, our staff time were allocated to that project this past year. Obviously, we want to ensure that we do the maintenance that is budgeted for. You know, we did do some work for the line painting this past year and got caught up on a few projects. But obviously, and it's happened in the past, too. But with that, those funds weren't used. They were used in a capital nature. And, you know, our staff were working on that.
And I do know that it was, put back to general revenue, which would have been a tax decrease as well. So it wasn't like the money just floated out into thin air.
Just a note on that additionally, we do have, so last year, a report was brought forward. And I know Andrew is working on bringing it forward again this year to be updated. That shows a detailed list of capital projects that have been budgeted but not completed. So last year, I'm sorry, probably Rob Dickinson is working on bringing that forward and working with Andrew. But last year was categorized into, you know, kind of timeline of when projects will be completed. But I think there's certainly a recognition and understanding that we have not been able to complete all of the projects we've been funding. So what we have been doing has been keeping, have been keeping those projects in, funded and in reserves. And there's more conversation about that and whether that's the right thing to do or not. But that report will be coming forward again. Thank you.
I have one more then, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the time from the committee members. So I'm just going to swing back a little bit to the storm sewer lift station. So we have, and just goes back to kind of the conversation we just had about this. So we have, we've gotten a grant from the provincial government and we're going to use it for the Roger Creek Trail System. And I'm not saying we can't do the work, but just going back to the finite amount of employees we have and the scope of work that we do have, would we be better off using that grant money towards a project that's needed for our infrastructure? And I'm not taking away from the parks or the trails, but the storm sewer lift system is a huge expense for pump maintenance and repair. And, I mean, we're talking about our storm sewers and delivering that service, which is an essential service. So would it, is it even possible to take that money from that and put it towards the storm sewer lift station rather than a project that we can push off for maybe another year or two?
Madam Chair, with grant funding, the project that, as identified, went through the evaluation and was approved based on the criteria for that project. And this is a restricted grant. Our gas tax examples such as that is under council's control to allocate as they see fit within looser kind of parameters. But with that, it's a grant that's provided for that trail. So if we have a different outcome, it's likely that that wouldn't be available for use.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Councilor Damon, and then Councilor Solta.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just gonna orient myself here. So I'm wondering, through you to Mr. McGifford, Madam Mayor, do we have a policy for how often we review facility rental fees? Or is this just something that is raised by council when they see fit? Is that?
Madam Chair, through to Councilor Dame, with our fees and services by law, it wouldn't normally come forward if council sought an increase or is looking at changes to it. Staff could recommend changes be brought forward in a staff report if we're looking at making changes. Obviously, we just went through a period of time where we were dealing with the COVID measures, trying to get things back to normal. And the timing of bringing forward a fees and charges increase during that period of time, from staff's perspective, might not have been good timing. So with that, we, you know, we obviously look at council's direction, the new council. And if there is something that council sees as far as a need to address, by all means, staff can bring information forward to report back to council on that.
Thank you. And if I may, I guess, parallel to that, I'm also wondering, I mean, again, probably bad timing, given that we've, you know, the pandemic and what we've been through the last couple of years. But I'm also wondering how easy it is to get the numbers of, like, how much these facilities and programs, I suppose as well, are in use? And how we, you know, do we audit those ever? Is there ever, do we look at these things and decide what sort of value we're getting out of each individual facility and program so that we can decide, is this something that is of enough value to the community to warrant the money that it costs to maintain and run these things?
Madam Chair, with that question, that's a good question, Councilor Dame. We, you know, like, we do have line items and project accounting. So we do track by facility, by different services. One area that we'd have to do some allocation for costs, for management's costs or corporate costs to provide those services. But there is a way to see if there's a level of effort provided across the organization to come to a cost. But we can pull the raw, sorry, the raw data from the financial plan and provide that to council if there's a request for that information and provide it in a report if that's desired.
I just want to note that we do have our Director of Parks and Rec here as well, who might want to just comment on the facilities master plan review and kind of what the scope of work is expected there. And if that would potentially give consideration to whether or not we have too many facilities for our community currently, or if we would need to additionally give that direction to have that review conducted.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the more the merrier. And further to your point, Madam Mayor, yes, at this stage, staff are looking at a facility audit or review to provide exactly what Councilor Dame's asking for. So staff's intent is that we would complete that audit and facility review to then present to council to say, here's what the chronological or lifespan of each facility is. Here's the value it brings that staff see. And then if council would like to continue on as is, or look to replace, refurbish, or maybe go away from some of the facilities, council would have all that information to make those decisions.
Thank you so much. Councilor Dame, did you have additional questions?
Okay, thank you. Then Councilor Solta. Just a quick question to go back on Charles as a counselor. And, do I speak English? Ask a question regarding the trails. So we got the grant on that and everything, but are we able to do it this year? When do we expect to start the trails is where I'm going with that one.
Madam Chair, I think Pat Deacon can speak to this project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Councilor Solta and Councilor Mealy. The project envisioned using consultants. So we had fisheries biologists and geotech consultants and engineering consultants on the project. There would be staff overview, but we did not anticipate that our crew would be doing the work. So that application was put forward. And with respect to the city's contribution, that is to be determined by council at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you, Pat. Councilor Solta, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, there is. I can't remember the total that the city has to kick in. Could you just, so do we look at, thank you. So do we look at putting that out, and it's up to council, I know that, this year and starting the project this year?
So only projects that were funded in excess of $1 million have the opportunity to be extended into the 2024 fiscal year. So there is an expectation with that funding that the project will be done by March of 2024.
Okay, so going on with that, where I'm going is the inflation rate. Are we, do we have an inflation rate in there? Because trails, what we budget for and in 2024, it's going to change quite a bit. So is there something in there to give us a cushion so it doesn't come back to council, a contingency fund that?
I'm really hoping that when we did the last budget, each of the consulting groups did their own budgets. And I did encourage them to take inflation into consideration. Now, that was in October of last year and prior to some of the more excessive increases. But the consulting groups have each, that was the fourth time that they have done the budget for that particular project. And they're aware that costs keep increasing. And we did make an allowance for an extended amount. I'm praying that it's enough. And at this point, that's about all that I can do.
All right. I'll just leave that for now and maybe ask something else later. But I do have a question regarding Councilor Mealy's road question, too.
Thank you. Councilor Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to wait till later to ask my questions, but everybody's asking all my questions. We'll have to jump in here. Willa, this question is for you. I'm really happy that you're doing a facilities management plan regarding the lifespan of our assets, because that was one thing I was going to request. Is there also any work going to be done on our assets that we rent out for these dollar-a-year contracts, like, for example, Abbey Field, you know, to get rid of them or keep them? Because my thought is, you don't make any money on them. And I can certainly see they can come back and say, we need a new roof or a new HVAC system, even though it's in their contract to complete. I can see somebody like them coming back to us and say, we don't have the money. So is it better just to get rid of buildings like that?
Madam Chair, a very loaded question. And so what, going back to the root of what I think Councilor Haggard's question is, is that the intent with that audit or review would be any facility that the city is the owner of. So regardless of who the tenant is, or whether it's run internally by city staff or by another invested party, the thinking is that, from staff's perspective, we present to council, here's all of the buildings that you own, and then indicate in there what the relationship is to the tenant or the occupant. And then council may decide what you'd like to move forward with.
And another question, Willa, while you're up here, is do you have any plans to do a review of user fees for our parks and recreation facilities?
So, Madam Chair, further to Councilor, or Counselor, Councilor McGifford, folks are being promoted this evening. Excuse me, Director McGifford, mentioned earlier this evening that if that's the wish of council, if council would like to see that specific bylaw, so the recreation fees and charges bylaw, again, the last update, the fees we're working off currently are from 2015. And so it wouldn't be uncommon to do more frequent reviews. Further to Director McGifford, the idea that things like COVID, of course, may not be an ideal time to do those reviews. But if council wishes to see that review happen, then it would be my recommendation that council would provide that direction to staff.
A question for our Director of Development Services. We've talked about this previously, but when do you plan to bring forward a report to council to raise building permit fees and DCC charges? We've had a really huge increase in buildings the last couple of years. We need to be capitalizing that. I know our fees are quite low.
Madam Chair, to Councilor Haggard, so we are currently working on a draft building bylaw, which is where our fees for our building permits are located. So a good component of that will be proposing revised fees for building permit applications. So we're in that process. I would hope that we could bring that to a future community, the whole, most likely in April or May at the latest. On the DCC charges, that's a much larger project. We are looking at, and requires a substantial engineering background study to do a complete development cost charge bylaw. But we are looking at what, if we're able, to do a minor modification for council to consider. Development cost charges, councils are required to provide an assist factor. And a lot of times, councils give them a very minor 1% assist factor. When we originally adopted that, when the city originally adopted that development cost charge bylaw, the council of that time put a much larger assist factor on some portions of our development cost charges. So we are going to do some research to see whether that is something that we could do in an interim measure to consider a small increase to our development cost charges prior to doing a full comprehensive review that we do know, we do need to do. But that's not something we'd be able to accomplish this year.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Other questions from council before we continue on?
Lots, but I'll wait.
Okay, Andrew.
With that, looking at the next section of the financial plan is the capital project area. So with the changes that we made last year for our procurement policy, now when council approves the financial plan, that project can proceed within the procurement thresholds that we have to allow a project to continue, as long as we have the financial capabilities to do that. So if we have a project that goes out for $320,000 and we have enough money for that project, that project would proceed if we undertake the RFP, award the contract, and then we report back to council. So now is the time that council needs to understand what is this capital project. And if you have questions, we need to flesh that out during the financial planning process. With the opportunity also, if there is a project that council desires to see come back to the financial plan, or to council for recommendation for approval, council can still do that. So you can pull something out that you feel is a must for council to approve. But that said, we do have that new procurement policy. It allows us to undertake the projects in a timely fashion, especially when we look at the summer months, when we're trying to get some of these capital projects undertaken. The timing of the council meetings might be beyond the time that we have to have that approval done, based on the submissions. So we do have to go through a rigorous process as far as reviewing these tender documents or RFPs. But that said, as long as council provides the financial ability to undertake capital and we can proceed with that, it would streamline the process. And now is the time to understand these projects. So we'll go project by project or area by area, once again, with capital. And looking at that, the first up, and this is coming from taxation in 2023. So this is, this is one of the questions that were asked earlier. So we will provide $500,000 in the financial plan for this capital project. It's the childcare center that's currently undergoing. We do receive a grant of $4.144 million. But with all the cost escalation, there was an updated cost estimate that was provided, and it required the $500,000. So that would be added to the 2023 plan. So if there's any questions about this capital project, we could address this at this time.
Any questions on this project? Okay. Not seeing any. Want to continue on?
Okay. Moving on to the Somas Mill redevelopment. In 2022, there was taxation that was used for any of the works that were undertaken. We took possession of the property in February of 2022. With that, there was some security, there was some salvage that was undertaken and some other contract work for development purposes. But with that, understanding the intent of this property is to have this redeveloped and then sold. Moving forward, in the financial plan, there is $650,000. Moving forward, in the financial plan, there is $650,000 from the land sale reserve that will be allocated to this project. Thereby, any, any monies that are returned would go back into the land sale reserve. And this way, it also creates a separation because in 2022, it was underneath the Planning and Development Consulting Services, which also held the OCP cost for 2022. So we do have to manually pull the, the numbers apart as far as getting the cost of dealing with the OCP versus the Somas property. This way, it's a separate project and it's much more transparent for staff and council to, to review. Okay. A strategic priority that started in 2021 was the annual tree planting. This is coming from taxation. Originally, it was $75,000. It was allocated in the financial plan for the first two years. Understanding, obviously, with inflationary costs, there is a lift of 2% per year on this line item. And this remains in the financial plan based on the prior council's direction. So we continue to populate the financial plan with this capital initiative. And any funds that aren't used in the, in the prior year would be carried forward for the specific project. But this remains at, in the financial plan. And this is coming from taxation, as I mentioned, for $76,500.
Question from councillor Douglas.
Thank you very much. Just a question, just again, so I could understand. So that current one, the tree planting says taxation 76,000. So that's obviously coming from taxes. That's more of a statement than a question, I think. I think I understand that part. But so in the previous section, the Somas Mill redevelopment, the 650,000 is not impacting any tax increases we may have. It's coming from our land reserve. Is that correct? Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Councillor Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question about, so when we're looking at, say, the $76,500 for the tree planting, what does that include? Is, does that budget line include the labor, for instance, for planting those trees? Or is that labor included in a different line? Is those are employee, full-time employees that would be all paid anyways? And this is just, yeah, hopefully that makes sense.
So, Madam Chair, with any, any item of expenditure, we do have project numbers. So if it's a staff time line item expenditure, then that would go against this project. It's capital in nature. What we're doing is making sure that we reflect the true costs of doing that work. So it's the equipment that we use, it's the staff time that we use. Or if it was a contracted service, then we would have the contractor cost for that. But everything associated with that, let's say if it was an advertisement for, for the, for the opportunity to bid on that, that would go against this project. So it's just reflecting the true cost of doing that work. Moving on to the next item, it's the hyper-converged infrastructure solution. This is a server upgrade that was provided early approval by council last year. Obviously, with our aging infrastructure for IT, this was brought forward and approved through council. And this is coming funded through the IRF, the Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund. So not a tax impact in 2023. Annually, we do have a computer equipment replacement. We call it evergreening. So IT would undertake a replacement of all our equipment. And we fund this through all the different services throughout the city. So each, each line item usually has a component going into the IRF based on that contribution that needs to be made to repopulate the financial plan with a replacement computer or hardware device. So we do have $86,000. It was increased due to some licensing, end of, end of life licensing for windows. So we do have to speed up a little bit. So we're increasing the, the budget by $15,000 for our evergreening to catch up over the next couple of years. And that's coming from IRF also. The fire department, there is a replacement of the 2007 Dodge Dakota that, that's in the financial plan. With that, there's also the, the platform that was already approved by council previously because there is quite a long delay in getting that apparatus to the city. With that, there's just over $2 million in IRF contributions to the purchase of these two items.
Thank you. A question from councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to staff. The, well, first of all, I drive a 2007, so I totally understand why there's a need for a replacement. However, are we looking to, I'm familiar with the truck. Are we looking to replace that with a bigger truck, like a half ton? The Dakota is a, is a small, small sized truck. So just wondering if the, if the, the next truck for, and I believe, is that for the assistant chief? Is it? I'm not sure who drives that truck exactly, but just the question is, are we going bigger with that truck? And is there a need for it?
Madam Chair, we have the deputy fire chief here, and he can speak to the recommendation from the fire department for that piece of equipment.
Madam Chair, through the director Mealy, or councillor Mealy, I apologize. Yeah, it would become, I have to untruck a little bit larger than what the Dakota is in order to be able to tow the trailer that we currently use and carry a little bit more equipment. It would allow for the ability for us to take our, our fire hoses, extra equipment from a fire back to the hall after a call. So that's what we're looking for.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So moving on to the next section of the capital plan is our transportation services. And I do have to give a plug to the previous council way back in 1973 to create this, this fund for the equipment replacement. You know, we, we talk about asset management and here's, here's an original asset management plan for equipment. So it's, it's great to have because there's no spikes. You know, we have a $2 million fire, fire expenditure for, for 2023. And that's in part funded through that IRF program, so. With the, with the one item that I'd like to pull out for, for council is, is the change to our solid waste fleet. In 2021, we moved to that three-stream system. And, and we, we originally thought we could have two trucks and still keep that third spare. But just the demand on time and, and, and the work that needs to be done in a normal working day has made us use the third truck at a regular interval. So we are experiencing some downtime and we don't have that extra backup truck. So there is a request in this year's financial plan to have four vehicles for the solid waste fleet, bringing on one per year. The original replacement for solid waste was in 2024. But we're moving forward, in the, in the financial plan as a recommendation, moving forward the one into 2023, doing a second in 2024, and then the third in 2025. And then keeping the best of the fleet as that backup moving forward. So we did, we did have some contingency in, in our costing for solid waste. There's no increase in the solid waste cost for 2023 with this change. We still are going to contribute, when we go back to normal, we did reduce the IRF contribution for this. But in 2024, we return back to the normal IRF contribution with this change in how we supply the fleet for solid waste. So it is a change. We're asking council to support this change to enable that backup, that redundancy within the service so that we limit the amount of downtime we have for solid waste services.
Thanks. And I just wanted to note that when this service was implemented jointly with the regional district, it was staff's recommendation and planning that led to us budgeting for the additional truck, even though we weren't sure at that time if we were going to need it. So we were able to make that change without an initial increase, which just wanted to commend staff for that great planning rather than having to go lower on our fees and then see an increase when it didn't work. So recognizing that we're going up to a fourth truck at some point now, but it's kind of built into the service for moving forward. Councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to director McGifford. So with this, so first of all, 2018 Freightliner, you know, the, the truck's only five years old at this point. And this goes to the question I was going to ask earlier on, so maybe this all, this all work out. So the lovely Sort and Go app, one of the best apps I've ever seen when it comes to telling our citizens about the, the waste management part of our, our community and the recycling, has been notifying me pretty much every day that we're, we've got some downtime. We've got a truck down. Is, is the 2018 Freightliner solid waste truck, is that the truck that's having problems right now? Or is it another truck, sorry?
Madam Chair, we have three trucks of the same vintage. They're all bought at the same time. So taking on three, three new trucks at one time was the original plan for 2024. But the recommendation is to do it in the staggered sequence moving forward to enable the last remaining vehicle, pick the, the best one of the, of the fleet that still remains and have that as our backup so we can put that into service if there is any maintenance issues that need to be undertaken.
One more, just a follow-up, and maybe, I don't know if you can answer that or not. But so obviously, this truck is having problems and it's been going on for a couple of weeks now. We've had delays in, in garbage pickup and recycling pickup. Do we know if that's even a fixable issue right now? I, I don't know what's going on with the truck. And I think, again, it may not be you, maybe somebody else to answer. But do we have an idea of what the problem is? And, and are we just looking to go, hey, at this point, it's too much of a repair. We're just going to scrap that one first and then, then lead into the new truck?
Madam Chair, I, I don't have the exact details and I wouldn't want to comment on something I'm not fully understanding. So I'll, I'll leave that question and we can follow up for you, maybe.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So looking at the financial plan for our transportation services, there is one item in there that, after discussion with the manager of our fleet, we will be bringing a recommendation forward to, to delay the patch truck replacement this year and move that into 2024. So that is one item that's over $400,000. I highlighted it in the financial plan as yellow in the capital plan. So we will bring forward that recommendation to council at, at the next opportunity to push that one back. With, with that, in our IRF contributions, we will be pulling two, just over $2 million from the IRF fund to do all the transportation replacements. Obviously, we'll, we'll reduce it by the, the amount that we will pull out for that patch truck. But we also have some carbon reserve funding that was originally planned for bylaw, a building bylaw replacement. So we, we plan on replacing that one with some type of hybrid or electric vehicle to limit the carbon footprint based on the carrot funds that we have in our reserve. Next, with our, our road and paving, a lot of our funding for this section of the financial plan comes from our gas tax, as we used to call it, but it's the Canada Community Building Fund Reserve. It's been a longstanding practice of, of council for any capital project that we have identified. We would use the gas tax fund. So we do have a few different projects in the capital plan for 2023, including Ship Creek Road. And there is the Anderson between Ship Creek and Raven Hill. That's the area that is being looked at. Third Avenue between Napier and Butte, Anderson at North Park, and Wallace between Sixth and Fourth Avenue. And, and that's combined with a, usually another capital project for combined sewer overflow or water or a sewer project, so. With that, we are using $680,000 from the Community Building Fund Reserve. And this is a non-tax item. We were talking about traffic upgrades earlier, too. And we do have a couple of projects in the financial plan for the traffic signal controllers. So these are going to be replaced at Third Avenue at Redford and Gertrude and Roger Street. So these are a couple of items that will be also coming from that, that Community Building Fund Reserve. With our CSO projects, these are aligned with our sewer projects. The city will commit to doing as, as many as CSOs as we can. So in our solid, not our solid waste, sorry, our liquid waste management plan, there is a commitment to do $1.3 million on average for our combined sewer overflow works. That, that is something that we try to attain. Obviously, we do have, the total expenditures per year do not always meet up to that $1.3 million. But on average, the city is committed to making sure that we do reach that targeted goal for the CSOs.
Thank you. I just wanted to add on that. Last year, our director of engineering brought forward a great report talking about combined sewer overflows, the problem that existed, the number of days a year that we're seeing combined sewer overflows and kind of the commitment to that $1.3 million, just because it is a significant amount that we're intending to take on going forward. I think it would be great if that same report doesn't even need to be updated. Could just be brought to council for information on, maybe on our next agenda, if you could just pull back out the same report for those members of council who weren't on council at the time. Thank you.
Moving on to the, the commitment to undertake some work for the men's baseball championship, Canadian championships. With that, there is $240,000 in the financial plan allocated to come from the Parks and Rec Reserve in 2023. Annually, McLean's Mill has a, a number of projects that are on the list to upgrade or retrofit some of the, the heritage buildings that are on the site. The $30,000 is a commitment from the city of Port Alberni. There's also another $30,000 from the ACRD that normally comes through as far as their share committed to these projects, which enable some of that work that was done in a project listing done by John Dam, I think, back in, back probably four or five years ago now. So we are continuing to do the work with the, the heritage side of the, the program at McLean's Mill.
Thank you, councillor Douglas.
Thank you. You mentioned the ACRD in relation to the McLean Mill capital projects, I believe. Just wondering, in the previous section there with the Parks and Recreation Reserve, does the ACRD donate anything or contribute in any way to our Parks and Recreation Reserve Fund?
Madam Chair, there's no donation directly to the Parks and Rec Fund from the ACRD.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarity, the Parks and Rec Reserve Fund is created by user fees. Is that right, a percentage of user fees? So I would just be cautious to say the ACRD doesn't contribute to that as many of the users who use our facilities live in the regional district. So I would say they do contribute to that Parks and Rec Reserve. However, they do not contribute to the greater, much greater Parks and Recreation cost within the city of Port Alberni, other than the, the small contribution that we do get for recreation services of around $20,000 per area compared with our multimillions.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. With that, I was thinking purely on taxation, and I wasn't thinking about the user fees. So I appreciate the clarity, thank you. With the train station phase two, we've completed the, the seismic upgrades at the train station. In the financial plan, there is a additional work to do in, in phase two to enable the, the leasing of that building. So there's some work that will be undertaken. And right now, staff is recommending it come from prior year surplus. We earmark these funds from the 2022 year for this project to limit the impact on taxation. Council does have the ability to make changes. If the funding isn't available for prior surplus, which staff feel comfortable making that recommendation, we can make alternative recommendations to, to council should that change.
Thank you. A question from councillor Solda.
Just a quick question, it might be in there, but maybe you could just report it out. Do we know what the surplus is for 2022 total?
Madam Chair, to men, to, to estimate the surplus, we're not there yet. We're still going through our reconciliations. We have a deadline set and we're hoping to get that populated hopefully by the end of March. Would have a better idea of that surplus. But we're still going through the annual reconciliations that we have to undertake to make sure that everything's adequately put in the right place as far as our costing.
Thank you.
Number 14, the city facilities, there's various small projects that we undertake. You know, there's some structural needs that are, are at the multiplex or there might be some carpet needs replacement or hot water tanks throughout all our facilities. This is an amount that we, we have a lot more need in, in some of our facilities. But we've limited the amount that we have brought forward. we've limited the amount that we have brought forward for this year's budget to those safety or regulatory needs, understanding we are undertaking the facility review, the asset management review of our facilities. So with that, there's $300,000 coming from taxation to do that needed work within all of our facilities and, and that, you know, we do have some monies that are left over from the prior year, but these are already earmarked for projects that are still in process for being undertaken in 2023.
Thank you. Question from Counsel Solder.
So our hot water tanks, are they electric hot water tanks? Does anybody know? I know I'm going that route and if they are, could we not go to gas on demand hot water? I don't know if the city can and could, if we could, can we apply for rebates? I mean, I just put in like on demand and I just got a thousand dollar rebate. So I'm just kind of curious to know. And the warranty is a lot longer, it's 24 years instead of eight years or seven years.
Yeah. Madam Chair, so many of these are boilers or, or very large commercials, so you know, taking that, that, that recommendation, I, you know, we look at the best solution for each facility and the need of each facility and, and often it's a, a large industrial boiler or, or something that wouldn't be that on demand, but yeah.
So I, I understand that some would be boilers, but like the park field houses, I mean, is that a regular, that's not a boiler in there and some of the smaller facilities?
Yeah. So, Madam Chair, with, often with those smaller replacements, those are usually in the operational budget because the cost of those items are, are much lower than capital in nature projects such as a, a boiler at the multiplex or Glenwoods.
I'm just trying, thank you.
Moving on to the water fund projects, there is various projects that are undertaken and, and with our water and sewer funds, these are supplied funding through our user fees. So they are not taxation, but they are capital projects that, that council, if approved, would not come back to council for, for that approval to award a contract if we have a contract that we'd like to release to a, a, a vendor. So unless that, that is something that council wants to bring back. So with that, there's a minor capital allocation of $100,000 in 2023. There's some work that is being done with looping on Dunbar, Dunbar and 10th Avenue for another $100,000. There's some design work for our main supply line from Bainbridge, from the, from Bainbridge to the Calhoun Reserve, Reservoir, sorry, for 150,000. Bird to 11th, there's an Estevan Street. This is a development related improvement that needs to undertake, so that was $160,000 in 2023. Again, First Avenue to Third Avenue, this is a grant related project that we applied for last spring, so not sure when the announcement might be made, but there is funding allocated for that in the financial plan of 115. Sixth Avenue to Bruce and Melrose, there's 48,000, that's a CSO. Same with Wallace, Fourth to Sixth, another CSO for $25,000 in, in 2023.
Thank you. Question from Counsel Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Director of Finance. I noticed Bird Street between 11th Avenue and Estevan Development Related Improvements for $160,000 for the water fund. So do we still, and I'm sure we do, but if anybody drives up Bird Street, and I know there's a few people here that do every day, it is definitely not what it used to be after the development. I would assume there's still going to be some roadwork to be done there. That will be after the water, the waterworks improvement or are we planning on doing that at that point? Sorry?
So, Madam Chair, I think the Director of Engineering and Public Works could probably best address this question.
There we go, because I'm talking. We are actually, we're finishing the works right now, there's phasing in the last phase of the, of the development along Bird. Once they're finished, they're on phase two of the work they have to do in Bird Street. We're hoping by the end of this year, they're going to finish it, but this year regardless, we're looking at doing, redoing curb work and sidewalk over on the north side and then repaving the entire road if we can right up to 17th.
Thank you, Counsel Solder.
Don't leave, don't leave, don't leave. A question regarding Bird. Of course, it's going to get busier and busier up there and with all this development, although ADS-S was busy, but not as busy, I think, as this development is going to bring. So what about traffic light? I'm, we're going to hear about it, we have heard about it. So is there anything in the mix in that or I don't know if you yourself that answers?
I, I can answer that. We just actually had a engineer for one of the developers up there did a warrant on that particular intersection. We still aren't warranted for a traffic signal for about 10 more years, but we are looking at that intersection just to provide improvements, just for pedestrian lighting and that type of thing, looking at what the curb works would look like. We want to do the design now so we can do improvements bit by bit and have it ready and then when the signals are warranted, we could put them in then.
Can you explain how that works?
The warrant.
Yes.
So the warrant system, basically a transportation engineer will look at the traffic volume, the type of traffic, the peaks that you have during the day, and it boils down to a level of service on how long you're waiting at, at an intersection to turn left, right, or go straight through. And the level of service is anywhere from A, which is amazing, you basically pull up and go, to F where you're sitting there for say three to five minutes waiting to go. And generally in the engineering world, you'll be around a C or D before you even think about upgrading that intersection. And right now that intersection is around a C. So and, and we don't expect with traffic volumes right now, one of the benefits of, of the development occurring versus that being a high school is high school starts at the same time, everyone drives there at the same time, whereas with residents, they all drive at different times of the day more so, so there's less congestion at the peak PM and AM times.
Thank you. Counsel Douglas.
Thank you, and I don't want to get us off the budget too far, but just curious, the warrant system, does that also take into account frequency and the level of accidents that occur at that intersection?
Definitely, it looks both at the frequency and the consequence. So if there's a fatality, it's higher up on the rung. If it's just fender benders and lower speeds, then it's lower down.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on from this? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Andrew.
Moving on to the sewer fund projects, so there's a sewer main video program. My recommendation would be to amend this and move this to the operational budget moving forward, so it's a item that we'll make an adjustment to. The CSO on Seventh Avenue to Redford Street in Butte, that's an increase in budget over the prior year's budget that was in 2022's capital plan of $270,000. We just undertook the Argyle Force Main Crossing on the Somas, so what we are looking at is next, the Josephine Street Force Main, and that's a detailed design with Geotech for a, a future year. CSO for the Wallace Fourth, Sixth Avenue, this is the detailed design in Geotech for $45,000. And then the annual amount that we put forward to small capital main replacements, and that's usually $100,000 per year. Once again, these are all coming from the sewer funds that are received through our utility fees.
Thank you. Counsel Haggard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Andrew, can we go back to number eight, paving and road construction? It says that, it says that the undertaking of a street renewal master plan would be appetitious to support future planning and budgeting, but due to budget constraints required, $150,000 is not included in the draft financial plan. But if you go back to our asset management plan from February of 2022, most of our roads are beyond their lifespan. Doesn't mean that they're not still usable and they're not still good, you can still drive on them, but because they're past that lifespan, I'm worried about if we wait and don't have a plan to replace these roads, they're just going to get worse and they'll eventually start to deteriorate so they are unusable. Would it be possible to start that master plan this year or is there a capacity for, to do that right now?
Madam Chair, it's an excellent question and I am sorry that I, I didn't catch that when I was walking through, that's, I'm glad that you pulled that out. So with that $150,000, when we were looking at the tax increase for 2023, it was one of the items that we, we did remove, understanding we'd like to populate that in the following year in engineering. Obviously with the funding that we just received for the, the growing communities in BC, it's a $5.2 million allotment for the City of Port Alberni. Is, is there an ability to use some of those funds to do some of that planning? We, you know, I'm not sure the exact details on that funding, but it is for growth and capital infrastructure. So, you know, I, i- if we can take the opportunity to, to, to do that work earlier, by all means, and I know that the Director of Engineering and Public Works would love to undertake that. I, I think it's not done internally, obviously it'd be a contracted work, so you know, if, if that's something that we could put back in the budget to undertake, by all means, that'd be great.
Thanks, Andrew, I appreciate that.
So is, is there any other questions related to our capital projects? And by all means, we have more time to do this. If, if something pops up after you go home and, and have a nap and have a sleep and it pops up in your head at three in the morning, write it down and we can maybe address these issues in future meetings. Okay. And moving on to the next section of the staff reports and it, it kind of, this section is, is kind of related to the staff report that we brought forward about our infrastructure deficit and there's some items in here that we did push off, such as the $150,000, just with the, the 8% increase and understanding we, we wanted to find an ability to still do the projects we need to do, but, but still not bring forward a tax increase that was, that just wouldn't be accepted. We brought forward that 8%, so that is staff's recommendation is the 8%, but with that, this, this graph provides us some items that could be added or, or moved around if, if council felt they wanted to populate the financial plan with these. And one of the items was the resolution or the request from the member of council to include the, the, the opportunity to possibly use some monies for the emergency reserve to, to address the, the youth services requests that we had a few meetings ago. So with that, I did want to bring up our current status with our, our emergency reserve and I do have it here. So when we look at our emergency reserve and it's something that was created back in 2014, we did have a balance at the start of 2021 or 2022, sorry, of $2.4 million. I understand we did have some commitments for not only the public safety building, but the estimated liability for our retro pay with the RCMP. So our balance at the start of the year was just over $2.4 million. The public safety building that's complete now was allocated 1.025 million, but there's also an estimated liability from the RCMP for just over $1.2 million. We also fund our community policing through this reserve annually and in 2022, we allocated $190,000, but we do have a preliminary surplus of $43,000 in the 2022 year at this time. So our estimated balance remaining is just, just over zero essentially. Understanding that, and I highlighted that it's anticipated that the repayment options for that RCMP retro would be available, so we, you know, in all likelihood would not have the $1.2 million be required right away and we could still manage within this reserve, but understanding there is that liability commitment within. So I just wanted to highlight that with the understanding that there might have been some interest in looking at the funds in this reserve to support that youth services.
Thank you, Counsel Haggard and then Counsel Solder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this, Andrew, but I just want to let the public know that this is, subject is not dead. We met with Josie Osborne last Friday and we talked to her about possibly some provincial funding. So just to let everyone know, we're still working on youth services or some kind of youth strategy. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Solder.
Well, I, some people would probably guess what I'm going to say, but I am not happy with that, you know, what it's presented regarding the RCMP, the, because we don't know if we're going to get the full retro payback or anything like that. The other thing too is the safety building, is that coming out of the reserve continuously or is that going to be the one time shot?
Thank you. I do just want to note that all of the, you know, this reserve being built up and the expenses that have come out of it are all, have all been at council's discretion. So council gave authorization to the public safety building to be funded from there and Andrew, you can clarify, but I believe that's the capital cost to purchase, renovate and equip the building, not the operational cost, but there could be some operation in there as well. And the retro, retro pay is not something that we'll get back. It was a built up liability over time that we knew was coming and we did have several reports over the last few years that, that informed council that this is where we were holding that liability. So although we, we got up to a two and a half million dollar fund, we were aware, council and staff, that that was not a real number because we knew that we had this liability coming. Andrew, if you want to add to that at all?
No, Madam Mayor, I think that's exactly what it was. It was council's direction to, to use this fund for the public safety building, moving forward to address Counsel Solder's concern about using this fund for community policing. There is an allocation from community policing for the building, but there's also bylaw services that is used in the building, so it's a split between the two for the use of that building moving forward. But of course, council can direct any, any which way they would like to fund that service and, and the budget would reflect that moving forward.
So Madam Mayor, I take responsibility for that because I'm part of that council that made that decision too, but when you see the bottom line at the end of the day, it kind of gives you a little worry here. It's like a bank account too, you know, you, you spend the money and then at the end of the day, you see the balance and it's like, oh my God, I did that? I, I do have concerns, eventually body cameras will be coming out and where is that money going to come? I just wish we could pop in, populate that money, some more money in that reserve and I don't, through taxation or something, I just don't like to see a reserve go to zero eventually.
And that reserve will populate over time from returns that we get back from the RCMP. This year is a smaller than normal return from the RCMP because of, I believe, the increases in pay and everything else, but anticipating that moving forward, we will start to see potential for larger returns again. And then the other thing, and Andrew, maybe you want to elaborate a little bit on, on the retro pay, because I know UBCM had an initiative to work with the, to work with RCMP to stage that retro over time. I think you mentioned that, but I'm not sure if it's clear on council that that $1.2 million might be able to be spread over time rather than just paying the $1.2 million all at once.
Yeah. Good point, Madam, Madam Chair. So with, with that, the indication and, and we, you know, report, we're reporting this conservatively, that that is a liability that's estimated, but in all likelihood, as I noted there, it's anticipated that there will be repayment options available so that we wouldn't have to pay back $1.2 million immediately. I know that's something, as, as Madam Chair said, that UBCM has been looking at. There was some mention last year by the prior Premier Horgan that they'd be doing something, so I, I understand that that is the intent. We just don't have any details on that yet and I anticipate that should be coming within this year, but we'll listen.
Yeah, and I think last, I would just add that this is a, a really great fund that we have and we know that many, we know the, the reasoning that we have and in case there is something that's an out of the norm RCMP cost, but most communities do not have a fund like this built up. So we're in a good position if we have it and now let's just get back to a point where it builds up over time. Thank you, Andrew.
Okay. So moving on from that, if there's still further questions with the RCMP reserve, I hope that clarifies. And, and as I mentioned earlier, when we were talking about expenses, there is the 32 members that we budget for. We do have a commitment for 34 members, but we usually only have utilization of about 30. So, you know, there is, that's where the surplus is built from, under utilization of Another point that was made at prior council and committee of the whole meetings was the line 29911, that's our contingency reserve. If we want to add that back and we do want to add that to taxation, that would be $100,000 to get it back to what we normally provide as far as a contingency or a 0.39 of a tax increase. So within the capital plan-
Sorry, just a question from Councilor Solder.
Yeah. Again, a contingency fund, I would like to see it built back up, and I know it's in the budget in the future, but I still would like to see us build it back up. I just like to be safe, the city, to, you know, just to have that build up. You never know what comes at the end of the day, and bringing our, we're already going to be at zero and one, I don't want to go down. So, I would like to see it being, be built.
Within the capital plan, there's $837,000 additional that we are pulling from IRF because of cost increases for our equipment. So, when we originally planned these pieces of equipment, inflation was much lower, equipment was much lower, but we have to utilize more of our IRF to enable the purchase of these pieces of equipment. So, that's approximately $837,000 of additional IRF. But over the long term, with increases in our IRF, again, it does dip down a little bit lower than we anticipated. We are still able to manage over the next couple of years with our equipment replacement fund, even with these increases, but we do need to increase the level of contribution and the expected rate of inflation on these pieces of equipment. So, that is something that we would make a recommendation, that we would move from 2% to 3% inflation on these items, and moving forward, that would be reflected in future capital plans and future operational plans as far as IRF contributions annually. And we've mentioned this earlier on line item 23121, this is the $150,000 that was pulled from the engineering consulting budget to do the street's renewal master plan in order to enable an 8% proposed financial plan increase. If we added this back, it would be $150,000 or .58 of a percent. In line 23137, this is a $90,000 item. This is analysis to do some options as far as our public works facility. We are refining that budget number. We are working with a consultant to see what we would look at as far as a... So, with that, we've put that number in there. Obviously, we'd refine this a little bit more further as we get closer, but if we want to do that analysis for our public works facility, what might need to be undertaken, we recommend that we put $90,000 in the budget for that work to be done in 2023. With that, we understand that there's a need to replace the boiler at that facility, and there's some roof replacement that needs to be undertaken at the public works facility. And the estimate right now is about $800,000, and if we were to populate the financial plan with that, that'd be a 3.2, 3.12% increase year over year. The capital plan also includes the 240...
Sorry, just a question from Councilor Solder.
Yeah. Can we go back to the $800,000 for the boiler? So, even if we moved the works yard, it will be a number of years before that would ever happen because you would have to build and find the location, that would take a while. But in the meantime, if the boil, is there heat there? The boiler also does our heating for that particular space and everything like that. So, do they have heat, or they have no heat there? So, just the timeframe, when this boiler needs to be worked on and the roof needs to be replaced, is it financially feasible for us to go ahead with the $800,000 if it's going to take 10 years to replace a building? So, I'm just kind of curious to know.
So, Madam Chair, I think the Director of Engineering and Public Works will...
So, it does heat the facility, and there is heat at this time. The intention with this is if we look at relocating the facility or repurposing the existing lands if we can, that we could make a decision quick enough that if we can limp along with the existing boiler and roof, that we could forego these costs. But we need to make those decisions very quickly, otherwise, we're going to be having a broken boiler that we can't fix at some point, or a roof that is going to cost us $800,000 to fix.
So, if we're limping along, and we're looking at down the road, right, to rebuild, it's still going to take a while before we get from A to B. But the thing is, they have the heat, the roof is fine, I'm assuming, at the moment, it just needs replacing. But is it better to have, put some money into for future instead of suddenly you come, not you, but someone comes along and eventually says, hey, it's going to cost us $1.5 million to do all this work down the road, would it be better to start putting some money in the fund, a contingency fund for replacement or a future public works yard? So, then, at the end of the day, if you come back and we decide, oh, we're going to go do, replace the boiler and the roof, we have so much money in the contingency, we just need to add this much more now. Do you follow where I'm going with that?
I do, and I guess, from my perspective, because I do tend to overthink things, is my recommendation would be, let's spend $90,000, and with that $90,000, we'll ask them, like, how long and what can we do to defer this boiler replacement and the roof repair? And if there's some way that, for instance, we can use modular construction temporary or whatever that looks like for our office space and for the works yard, can we limp along for a few years and not spend this $800,000? That's what I would hope, is let's spend the $90,000 and see if we can avoid the $800,000.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think the decision of whether or not to put some funds into a reserve to possibly fund that boiler down the road, that decision is a financial council decision. So, we could do that if we wanted to. We could always direct funds be put toward a project that might be undertaken in future years.
Councilor Mealy.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, maybe I didn't, I didn't catch that, but out of the $800,000, how much is it, how much are we thinking the roof is going to be replaced, and how much for the boiler? How does that split up? Do we, do we have an idea for that?
I don't have the breakdown, but we can bring that back.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And the final item on the list that we put in as staff is the capital plan. Currently, we have $240,000 coming from our Parks and Rec Reserve. Rather than come from the Parks and Rec Reserve, move that to taxation, that would be about .94 of a percent increase. So, just some examples of items that staff had moved in and out or were considering through the budget process, but it didn't make it in the financial plan, or were there in alternate ways. So, council, you do have the choice to make any decision or move things around as you see fit. So, if there's any further questions as far as allocations or other items that you'd like more information on, capital or expenditure-wise, we're definitely open for that.
Not seeing any yet, and as stated, we'll have lots more opportunities still. So, thank you very much, Andrew, for that report. We're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is staff reports.
Just going to quickly, before we move on to staff reports, I do have the Q and A, just to mention the Q and A. So, there is, there is information later on in the agenda about questions on the financial plan. We'll populate the financial plan Q and A once again with these questions and any questions that were brought up tonight. So, just, so the committee's aware of that, and I just wanted to confirm that.
Thank you. That's great. Then we'll move on to current and proposed financial reserves.
So, just to give the committee a little bit of background, in a prior year, I have presented a review of reserves, talked about how financial planning and reserve planning are intertwined. So, today, I'm just going to do a review of some current reserves, the process of financial planning and reserve planning, as well as some proposed reserves. So, currently, the city does do some reserve planning. We've mentioned it tonight. We have our IRF reserve, we have the emergency reserve we talked about, along with a bunch of others. Establishing reserves that align with strategic priorities will assist council in making, in better decision-making throughout the financial plan. Just in front of you guys is kind of like a map of how to guide reserve establishment, and looking at the different priorities council may have, whether it's strategic initiatives, risk mitigation, capital planning, or statutory requirements. There are different types of reserves that can help you along the way in planning out your financial plan. So, I've kind of made some examples here. We have capital works, snow removal, asset management, parks acquisition, strategic initiatives. So, these are examples of the different ways that you can guide reserve planning. Sorry, I've totally missed up, mixed up my papers here while I sat down somehow, so just bear with me a minute. There we go. So, establishing new reserves and reviewing our reserves gives council the opportunity to look at their strategic objectives and have a better understanding of the funds available in the financial planning. So, establishing reserves can help appropriate funds properly and provide opportunities and funds for emergencies. Funding may be set aside to ensure city assets can be maintained and replaced, and that funding is available to direct towards council's strategic objectives. It also allows council a clear picture of the purpose of a reserve and the balances that are maintained inside of it. The next slide I'm going to show you is kind of a link between reserves and financial planning. Today, we'll talk about the different reserves we do have, some proposed reserves, and get a conversation discussion going about how we can align your priorities by creating or using our reserves. Next steps would be determining funding allocation for said reserves, establishing an annual review process and contribution process, and then once we really get into that nitty-gritty sitting, minimums and maximums and timeframes to achieve your goals. Could you guys bring, I know you're in the middle of changing seats here, do you think you could bring up my report for me?
Yep.
And if we just want to scroll down to where it starts, the conversation on the different types of reserves that we have. That's okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, that's good. Thanks, Andrew. So, just a brief review of the current reserves. We have two different types of kind of reserve buckets, I will say. We have statutory reserves and non-statutory reserves. So, statutory means that the funds have specific sources set aside and specific purposes that are required by legislation. So, that's our parks acquisition reserve, and of course, our development cost charges as well. So, in our parks acquisition reserve, this one was established in 2006, and revenue generated from the sale of parkland or receipts of money from amounts paid in lieu of provision of parklands and subdivisions are allocated to this fund. Also, the funds received from the sale or disposal of parkland will also be put into this reserve. Development cost charges as well, so intended use of those funds included in these reserves are to provide for constructing, altering, expanding infrastructure for which development cost charges are collected. So, that includes your water, your sewer, roads, playgrounds, and storms. Non-statutory reserves are those reserves that can be established by bylaw if council so desires. So, pursuant to the community charter, we currently, you have the ability to change, repeal, or amend bylaws as your goals and strategic plans change. I'm just going to go through a couple of these definitions, just for the new council members. I know some of you have sat through this before, so bear with me as I go through them. The land sale reserve, it was established in 1996, and this one was established for the assembly and marketing of land related to development costs. So, to purchase lands required for city use and for servicing or upgrading of city-owned parcels and facilities. The IRF, the equipment replacement funds, as we've talked a lot about tonight, so basically to offset the future capital cost of qualified equipment and to smooth out any taxation requirements. So, we've talked about that one. The capital works reserve. The capital works reserve is a fund that has basically funds set aside for future capital construction projects. It's meant to reduce borrowing requirements and can be used for general water and sewer. The funds are to be used for capital projects, including extension, renewal of existing capital works. And it is also recommended that we have any, of any funds related to general capital work that may not have been spent on prior projects be also put into this reserve for future use or rescoping of projects to be continued. So, just a little further explanation on that, I just rolled over my papers. So, if we have a budgeted amount in prior years that's put in our general capital fund, we haven't spent that money on a project, we would put it into this reserve. So, council would have a really good understanding of money going to be spent on general capital projects for construction in the next year. We also do have the recently established Canadian Community Building Fund Reserve, so formerly known as the Gas Tax Reserve Fund. So, this is for eligible projects pursuant to the Community Building Fund Agreement. So, not limited to, but including infrastructure, construction, renewal, or material enhancement and capacity building projects. We do have also a Parks and Recreation Reserve, which we've touched on as well. So, like Madam Chair, you had mentioned, there is a 10% of all recreational departmental fees and charges on an annual basis are put into our Parks and Rec Reserve account, averaging anywhere from around $60,000 to $70,000 on an annual basis, usually. So, also, any proceeds from log scaling also would go into this fund as well. We have our Alberni Valley Community Forest Corporation Reserve established in 2014, and this was established for the purpose of receiving and depositing dividends from the Alberni Valley Community Forest. Use of the funds is at the discretion of council and also with the consultation with the Alberni Valley Community Forest Board, with the exception of $10,000 annually, which is distributed by the Alberni Valley Community Forest members to support special community projects. We have two infrastructure capital reserves, one for wastewater and for sewer infrastructure and for water infrastructure. So, they are established solely to keep funds dedicated to water, wastewater and water. So, anything that needs to be done infrastructure-wise related to the city's strategic asset management plan or constructing, altering, and repairing aging equipment and infrastructure, including linear assets and buildings as well, under those two separate areas. linear assets and buildings as well, under those two separate areas. We briefly talked about our CMP emergency reserve. So again, that's our CMP contract surplus amounts that are contributed into this reserve and used as contingency or community policing or other policing costs that are approved by council. We have a carbon fund established in 2013, and this, basically, the reserve is used to fund projects that reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions. Money is received from the federal government annually under our Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, we call it CARIB. In 2019, the province announced the end of the CARIB program, and we do have a new program called the Clean VC Communities Fund as well. So contributions from this new stream will also be going into the reserve. So that takes care of our major reserves that we have currently at the city. We do have some proposed new reserve funds as well that staff have put together in this report. So we have an aquatic center replacement reserve to be considered. If any of these, we can have a discussion on it, and if at any time you want to consider any of these reserves, staff can certainly bring a report back to council, and we can go through that process of consideration. So an aquatic center replacement reserve for the purpose of reserving monies for the future replacement of the Echo Aquatic Center or pool. Well-approved in the 2021-2025 financial plan, there was a budgeted amount of $30,000 that was budgeted towards a plan. That would be an example of something that may go into this fund. An asset management or general infrastructure replacement reserve. This is basically a start or placeholder in our financial planning that would be used as a marking point to start our financial planning for asset management. So currently, we have not, we have a financial, strategic financial plan, and we have yet to produce asset management plans. So looking at creating a placeholder in our financial plan dedicated for asset management contribution would be a great way to kind of start making sure that we are incorporating the financial planning and reserving those funds. So staff have looked at a contribution amount, an estimated amount, that, you know, as an example, could be used in this asset management reserve, and a proposed annual contribution of 2% of a tax levy for capital sustainment in 2023 is, would approximately be around So that would be an example of an annual contribution amount, obviously for discussion, but it would be good to have something earmarked in the plan just to start the process going forward until we have some more solidified numbers for council to review. Another proposed reserve would be a strategic priorities reserve, so intended to support strategic priorities and initiatives, including operating initiatives, social issues, climate change, and council contingency as well. We do have a number of little pockets of money for our museum reserve, different things that have been dedicated in trust or collected over the years, and we would like to establish this as an official museum reserve or museum projects, which could be from restricted community donations or donations in trust. These restricted reserve funds are currently tracked and set aside, but I don't have really a formal reserve that I have put as a presentation to council by bylaw. Also, a McLean's Mill Projects Reserve to establish a fund for McLean's Mill projects that repair or replace new or historic infrastructure at the McLean Mill Historic Site. Currently, heritage fees are collected and set aside for this purpose, but we have yet to establish it as a reserve. So McLean, also contained in this would be McLean Mills grants received that are currently set aside for capital budget use on McLean's Mill projects. So an example we talked about would be the $30,000 received from the ACRD. This is the last time I use the back and front side of my papers to organize. And I think that's it. So I'll open the floor for discussion, if you'd like to discuss, I mean, the reserves mentioned, any other ideas of proposed reserves that council would like us to either research or come back formally with.
Thank you very much for the report. I have a question first from Council Haggard and then Council Douglas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really glad that you came forward to the Asset Management Reserve Fund, because that's one of the things I have on my notes here. The average rate of tax increases from 2016 to 2021 is 2.95% per year, which was less than the rate of inflation. So this doesn't even cover ongoing maintenance costs that we have, and we're always continually asking our staff to do more with less money, and we have not put aside anything for infrastructure replacement cost. So we have to think beyond the next election, we have to be brave and think of the next generation. We can't leave them with crumbling buildings and roads and infrastructure in our community. I would actually like to see that at a million dollars a year, not $500,000. A million dollars doesn't go very far in replacing buildings, so we need to really amp that up a bit. I know it's going to hurt, but in the long run, it's going to be, just help us, thanks.
Thank you, Council Douglas, and then Council Mealy and Council Solder.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify about the Aquatic Center. So it was approved in 2021, I'm not sure who addressed this, but not actually established, is that what I understand to be?
Council directed that we kind of start a savings account for it. We didn't create a formal statutory reserve or bylaw, a reserve by bylaw.
Okay. So I guess my next question, then, we do have money set aside in some sort of fund?
Rosalyn.
Madam Chair to Council Douglas.
Thank you.
We have established a budget amount of $30,000 to work at planning, to find out ideas and discussion about what we would do with a pool. No physical funding has been set aside actually for the replacement of the pool. So we have that $30,000 set aside, but we don't have it in an actual bylaw reserve that we would present in a presentation form on our financial planner.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would add is that there's been conversation that the Parks and Rec Reserve Fund, that, you know, as it was mentioned earlier tonight, there have been funds over the years put into that reserve that were intended, based on what counselors tell us, that were intended to be for the pool. So I think that that reserve is, has been a bit of a mix in terms of what its intention has been. So when we made the motion last year to create a reserve for pool replacement, there was a future conversation kind of intended for what, if any, from that reserve do we want to contribute to that fund?
Yeah, I won't belabor it too much, but yeah, from what I recollect, when the community forest was brought into being, that was solely actually dedicated towards the new pool. But again, it wasn't properly established as a fund, and...
Yeah, and that's the one piece that we actually came back to, because I remember that conversation when you were mayor, about directing, I think, $300,000 or a specific amount specifically to that reserve for the pool. So that's really where the conversation came from, we just had not yet directed a specific amount of funds to be transferred from one reserve to another, just the intent to create it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mealy and then Council Solder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Deputy Director McCauley, sorry, got to get that right. My question is more along the lines of how the reserves work. First of all, I'm a big fan of reserves, I was taught that a long time ago. It's always good to have a contingency plan and a contingency fund, and then my first year or two on council, it was really solidified by a lot of people that had a lot more experience than I did. So when the typical, typical person puts money aside, they put in the bank, and they get a 2% interest or whatever the interest is, it's a little different for us, I see it's investment income. Can I get a bit of an explanation on how, is there specific places that these, this money goes in, or is it just like going into a bank and we just get interest on that? And if you can't answer that, maybe you can get that to me another time?
Madam Chair to Councilor Mealy, most of our reserves we do have in short-term investments, usually 100% guaranteed for capital preservation. Some reserves are very particularly stated that interest is directly going back into that reserve and specifically used for the intended use of the reserve. And so most, I would say, of our reserves have that included in it. You know, one, we have just a general reserve that we keep our general taxation money in, that one would be, the interest could be used at the discretion of council. However, for our IRF fund, our gas tax fund, development cost charges, you know, Parks and Rec Reserve, the interest earned on any of those short-term investments would go back for use in those funds. You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Solder.
I agree with Council Mealy, I'm big on reserves too, as nobody notices that by now, but I do agree with Council Haggard regarding our infrastructure, and I do love the reserves, and I, it worries me that we're not going to catch up. And when it comes to the streets and roads and for the future and that, and I would like to see that bumped up too. There's a few things that I'd like to see bumped up that's not there, and I'm not sure, Madam Mayor, how you want to handle that for if we want to make a motion towards something, or is it a notice of motion? How is that going to all work and play out would be great to know. I have several questions, but I will ask, I'll send them to Andrew, because there are a lot of questions there, and there was some questions that Andrew has received for me, and maybe he can answer them afterwards too, for the public, thank you.
Thank you. So just to note that what's included in this report is just a suggestion, so that 2% is not actually in the budget to bump up at this time. And Rosalyn, maybe you could comment on if we would, if we support all of the reserves that you've suggested here, laying out new ones and designating others, then what's the best way to proceed with that? Just, I mean, this is a committee of the whole, so we can't make motions today, we can make recommendations to council, but would the best way to proceed with that be to bring this report back to council, or to ask you to prepare a report for next steps?
I think next steps, and I'll probably also refer to the corporate officer here as well, but next steps would be to make a recommendation for a staff report, and I think that's the best way, but I'll refer back to Danielle.
Thank you. So if anyone wanted to move receipt of this report and to recommend to council that a staff report be brought forward to implement, Council Mealy would like to make it.
So moved, I was waiting for Council Solder.
Thank you, seconded by Council Solder. Any discussion on that piece? Seeing none, on the motion, all in favor. Carried, thank you. And Council Solder, if you do have specific items that you'd like to bring forward for changes to the budget, that could be done now in terms of recommendations to council, or it can be done without the additional step at our next regular meeting of council. So you could make motions within the budget piece on, I believe, the 13th.
All right, Madam Mayor, I'll make those recommendations on the 13th, but I do have one that's on the Uptown Merchants on Johnson Road, Upper Johnson Road, the $20,000 we had talked for, waiting for a report, but if it's not in the budget, how do we handle that? Would it go into economic development budget of $20,000? You know, I'm just kind of curious to know how to handle that one. Andrew.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So there is a report coming to council for that, the Director of Engineering and Public Works is working to get that to council, so, yeah, we will, we will have that for council to consider at the next opportunity, I think.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Council Douglas.
Thank you, and I just, I might have missed this one, just about DCC levels? I was just wondering, I know we introduced them years ago, and I'm just wondering if I saw it in the budget or not, have we come up with a figure by which we should increase those DCC levels?
I think I would have to refer to Director Smith on that.
Through the chair to Council Douglas. So we are looking at if there's an ability to do a small lift this year based on an assist factor, to do a complete review and new development cost charges, there's a significant amount of engineering background work, because development cost charges must be based on infrastructure work that is needed for the future. So we do wish to intend to do that work, but there's nothing in the budget to do that larger engineering background work to feed into that this year. We would hope to have that considered for a future year, say, 2024, but we will look at what our ability to potentially, for council to consider a small lift this year, but there is a substantial amount of engineering background work that's needed to consider like a complete review of a development cost charge by law.
Council Douglas.
Thank you, and just to follow up, the reason I started thinking, this was earlier, we were having discussion about Bird Street and all the work that's having to be done there as a result of the impact of all the housing development that's gone on on that street, and that's what just made me, occurred to me, if we assessed, you know, accurately our DCC levels, and perhaps that is something that we do need as our director here suggested, maybe at least a small amount this year to be followed up with an accurate reassessment for the following in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Solder.
Just a quick question, Madam Mayor, and I'm, I'm not sure if this belongs to the Director of Finance, the question I had asked, and I sent him the question, what is our total borrowing debt, including our debt with the RCMP, with the ACRD, and when do you expect our debts to be paid off? And how much money can we actually borrow with all this debt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Council Solder. So with our debt at the ACRD, it's technically the ACRD's debt. So that is a service area for the Alberni Valley Regional Airport, that's not a debt that is against the city per se. So when we do our liability calculation, that debt doesn't formulate the overall debt the city of Port Alberni has. As a participating member of the service, we have an allocation of that debt, and the ACRD has, I think, I think that debt is up in 20, that was a 30-year debt, so that was up in 2044, I believe, but I can confirm that. So with that, it's not the city's debt, it is, it is at the ACRD. We pay for that debt through the service area. When it comes to our debts, and it varies, because we have various debts for the different borrowing that we've undertaken over the past 10, 15 years, and expires between 2031 and 2050. That does not include the new debt that we anticipate undertaking this current coming year for the spring issue, so there's that $8.5 million that we have. And at the end of 2022, we have just under $13 million in outstanding debt with the MFA, Municipal Finance Authority of British Columbia. Trying not to use acronyms all the time, so. And with our liability servicing capacity, that's calculated annually, so at the end of December 2021, we had $8.4 million in the liability servicing capacity remaining. So that is calculated every year, and I think in 2021, the servicing debt that we had was... in 20, in 2021, the servicing debt that we had was $628,000 for that year. So that's, that's how much debt we service every year.
Thank you. Additional question, councillor Solder?
Yep, I put it somewhere. And, oh yes, here it is. The ACRD, when we did our, our budget analysis, did we encounter, talk to the ACRD? Because they look like they're raising their taxes up. But there's a pretty big substantial increase, and I'm just wondering that the city has to pay into. So I'm just curious, you know, if that's been put into our line.
Andrew?
So we've been provided with the financial plan. Just as a staff presents to council here, the ACRD staff will present to the ACRD board as far as what's proposed. The ACRD board will review that and make decisions on that financial plan. So right now, obviously, that is a proposed budget. The board will look at that and, and make the finalization before March 31st, which is their deadline.
Councillor Douglas?
Thanks. Again, just so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle, the discussion about the DCCs, will that be brought forward to council?
If you make it as a recommendation, it will be brought forward to council. So you're welcome to make a recommendation now.
Okay. I would like to do so, please.
A recommendation to explore increasing DCCs by whatever minimal amount is permitted this year.
As proposed by our Director of Planning.
Moved by councillor Douglas, seconded by councillor Mealy. Any comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried. Thank you. So that will come forward to a council meeting for council to vote on. Thank you. Any other? Councillor Mealy?
Just one small one, just hearing the MFA, Municipal Finance Authority, and it was a question that I brought up the other day to myself. I think weird things. What's the city's credit rating? We were a AAA way back in the day. Are we still high up in that?
Councillor Mealy, off the top of my head, I do not know, but we are very highly rated, because the Municipal Finance Authority of BC is representative of all the municipalities and local governments in, in BC. And because of our timely reporting that we have, our standards and our low risk, we are, we're getting great rates as far as borrowing in the market, and we continue to get that. So yes, we're very highly rated. I can confirm that number, whatever bond rating we do have at a future meeting.
The MFA's official rating is AAA still. So if we're ranked as a result of theirs, it's AAA.
Well, that's a testament to our financial manager and his staff. Thank you for so much.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you, Andrew. We'll move on to correspondence. And we do have one piece of correspondence today from Leslie Willarias, Financial Plan Questions. There are several plan, several questions within. Any items councillors would like to speak to here? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on to new business, and I'll go to councillor Douglas first.
Thank you. It was just a conversation I've had in the recent past about the formality of the community of the whole meetings. And from what I gather, when we first started doing these, and I think it was 2015, in that era, they started out as being very informal events, and the idea was for them to be informal, and welcoming, and open, and, and easy to approach, and easy for participants to engage with council, and easy for councillors to engage with the, the public and the staff. So I was just wondering, I just wanted to bring it up as a topic, and see if, you know, maybe we could look, take a look at some other communities of similar size, such as Cam River, Lady Smith, and Anymore, and see if there's any ideas they might have for a more informal setting. I, I do recollect that we had a different seating arrangement, which I think we could easily accommodate with the numbers that we have here. And I thought it might just be, you know, we have had comments made by the public that it's intimidating in our council meetings. So maybe as an alternative, we could come up with some ideas, incentives for people to come here, and some ideas where we could, you know, as we look back at this meeting here tonight, it's very formal. We're all addressing each other in these formal terms. I'm trying to do it, but failing miserably, you know. But, you know, so maybe we could step back a bit and relax a bit. If we could come up with something. I, I do recognize that, you know, we need a structure. You know, we definitely need a structure. It can't be all chaos and mayhem. But if we can come up with a structure that's a little more open and comfortable and relaxing, it could be a good thing for us to consider. So.
Thank you, councillor Douglas. Just wanted to note that I was the councillor who brought forward Committee of the Holes when we did implement them in 2015. And that really was the intent, to have a more formal, comfortable meeting opportunity. And we, you noted earlier tonight that we did some kind of sitting in a circle. And I think those were our budget meetings at the time, where we had staff sit kind of as a part of council table. And we did allow members of the public as well. We've used them for a lot of different purposes. And I think a budget meeting is almost, this might not really even be the, in line with what the original intent of, of a Committee of the Whole was. But we've used them really effectively for things like crime discussions in the community. We also have had one that I can think of outside of City Hall, which was, it was just around a general topic of discussion. But we didn't hold it in council chambers. And so that could be an idea as well, to have them rotating around to more comfortable places more frequently. And I'm wondering if it would be, rather than making a recommendation to council, I wonder if this is a piece of discussion that could be brought to our procedures manual, or our procedures bylaw discussion that we are going to be having facilitated by Jerry Berry in the next month or so. Because I believe our Committee of the Whole is covered in procedures bylaw. So if we wanted to make it less formal, if we wanted to change locations, change the structure, change the seating arrangements, we could work that into that conversation. Thank you. Then we'll move on to question period. And before I go to members of the public, I have councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to be quick then. So just a, a couple of items that have come up from city, citizens, taxpayers. So just wanted to just ask the question. One was already somewhat answered, which is what's happening with the garbage truck? Maybe just get an idea of, of the delays that have been happening lately. The other one is just the pool closure and the lifeguard situation. Just having many people contact me about the closures and that. So I just, I guess the one question, just are we, are we hiring lifeguards? Just, I want to put it out there, I, I kind of know the answer, but I just want this to be kind of in public and, and on the record for, for citizens that are asking me that question. So, and I do appreciate having Director Thorpe here today. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, or Madam Chair. And yes, councillor Mealy, I would love to see you apply as a, as a staff member at our Aquatic Centre. Kidding aside, yes, we are accepting applications currently. We have also discounted the fees to participate or register in advanced courses. So part of the challenge with training up new lifeguards, it's not something that's as simple as come to a weekend session, get trained up, and off you go on the pool deck a few days later. It is quite a, quite an investment in time. And so we're trying to eliminate all the barriers we possibly can to get folks interested and registering for those advanced courses. So if folks head to portalberney.ca, there is information listed there, as well as our Parks Recreation Heritage website at playinpa.ca.
Councillor Mealy?
A quick, quick follow-up. So I did notice it was on the ADSS Career Centre page, which is great, reaching out to the local high school, somebody graduating and got a great career here with the city of Port Alberney. What if we have citizens in the community that are already reg, not licensed, but not registered either, I guess? They already have their certification. Who would they approach at the city, and how would they do that?
So a similar process as far as reaching out to our contact information online would be a great place to start. And that way, we can ensure we lead them or direct them to the, the appropriate folks. We've had some individuals, for instance, that have recently moved to town, that may be certified somewhere else in a different province, or even out of country, that we're exploring as well. So again, trying to eliminate barriers. We want to get all of our facilities functioning at 100%.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to questions from any members of the public. Roland?
There it is. It went out. Got a few things here. Just, it's probably just a housekeeping issue, but I noticed on page nine of the agenda, some small redevelopment, that it says 650K is coming from the land sale reserve. But I think that's probably just a mistake. Sorry, from the Parks and Recreation Reserve in the capital projects list. On page, what page is that? Page 40 of the agenda. It's on the, it says it's coming out of the Parks and Recreation Reserve. But I think that's probably just mislabelled.
So that, the title on that?
Okay, okay. On paving and road construction, and councillor Haggard, I think it was brought this up, she circled back to it, that due to budget constraints, the required $150,000 for this plan is not included in the draft financial plan. But considering the verbiage, as councillor, or committee member Haggard read, is that, and that would equate to a 0.55% tax increase this year. And we talked about a former engineer here, and how far we are behind in, on our roads, and we are all drive around town, we see what they're, where they're at. Would it not be prudent for council, because I didn't, or the committee I didn't see a commitment tonight, to just put this $150,000 in and get going with this plan, instead of waiting till next year?
Absolutely. So I do sense that that is coming forward to be put into the budget. So as you know, there are two ways to do that. A recommendation can be made tonight, or an actual amendment to the budget can be made at our next regular council meeting a week from today.
So the committee doesn't have to recommend to council? Council will just bring it up?
That's right. So the committee, and the committee can't move something to be included in the budget tonight. We can only make a recommendation to council for council to then consider. So I would suggest that there are several things that members of council are planning to bring forward, either adding in or taking out of the budget. And just because you're not hearing that happen tonight, doesn't mean that it's not coming. It can be made in, as an actual amendment to our budget at a regular meeting of council.
Okay. So let's see. The interest on investments was discussed briefly. I noticed that about 7,450 was reported for last year, 29,000 in 2021, and zero interest on investments for 2020. So I'm wondering why the fluctuating, what, what's influencing that? Interest rates were fairly steady until recently, the last few months, and they've been going up. But is that a reflection on the status of the balances? How much is in investments or not?
Andrew, are you able to answer that tonight, or at a future meeting?
I can answer.
Yep. Go ahead. Okay. We'll bring that answer back. Thanks, Roland.
And under the McLean Mill Agreement to operate, maintain, and manage, section 2.6 says that a 10% heritage fee, no cap, will apply to each and every transaction on or regarding McLean Mill. Funds are to be provided annually to the city. And I'm wondering what the amount of the 10% heritage fee that the chamber paid to the city for fiscal 2022 and 2021, if we have that?
We'll bring that information back as well. And that was one of the items that I know Roslyn noted, that we'd like to be in that dedicated reserve, rather than just set aside.
Okay. Also, section 2.6 of that agreement says that the city will maintain effective signage indicating the purpose of heritage fee, and the projects completed or projects being planned using those funds. Where do we find that information? Because the agreement says the city will provide informational signage. Specifically, the words were, so that the public can view projects completed and projects planned for.
And I would imagine that, I don't believe that we've used those funds yet. So there aren't projects that have yet been dedicated from those funds. So that's why you wouldn't see the signage there.
Okay. On the, just curious, because it's been recommended by staff that we delay the 1.25 million requisition for the final tranche of money for the Collecta Keys Path till 2024. If that 1.25 million remained in this year's plan, that would be nearly a 5% tax increase. But I'm curious, inflation is still running at 5 or so percent. How is delaying that going to look any different a year from now, and avoid a 5% or more tax increase to get the last batch of this money? I'm just, just wondering if that's on people's minds.
Absolutely. And that conversation has partly been had already. I think at this point, there's a larger conversation to be had around the path generally, how council would like to move forward with it, if it's going to be built all at once, staged in sections, if the section in the middle is going to be built or not. You and I have had this conversation many times. So I think a piece of it is delaying, because we're just not willing to accept a tax increase that large at this point in time. And a piece of it is, there's no point in taxing for something that we're really not certain yet on how we're moving forward with it.
Okay. So on sanitary storm, I brought that up here last year about CSOs, and how we're, we had a long way to go. So I'm just curious, and I had sent some of these questions out earlier, so I'm not sure if we're answering these tonight or not. But I'm just curious if all the CSO work has been completed, that was identified in the financial plans for 2020, 21, and 22, as that, because at the end of 2019, there were about 57 and a half kilometers of CSO remaining to be separated. And we've been doing it over the 20-year previous period, leading up to 2019, barely 500 meters a year, which implies we've got over a century to go to complete this project. So I'm wondering where we are on that. Again.
So our Director of Engineering is going to bring back both the CSO reports and an updated report on capital projects that were funded but not yet completed. I do note that some of that is, is within our budget report tonight. But the report from last year that was brought forward from our Director of Engineering listed several projects that were anticipated to be completed by the end of 2022. So that report will be updated and brought back to council, and that CSO work will be included within it.
Okay. So for clarity, because I had sent some of these questions about a month ago. So should I wait for those questions to come, or sorry, the answers to those questions to come in this report you're alluding to? Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. And we can bring some specific answers, but I would suggest that we're going to get a more effective overview of where we're at with our capital projects if we wait for the whole report to come forward. And I do know that it's already in the works.
Okay. So what about, would that be applied to water meters on the water meter program? Is that the, the same scenario? Because we discussed that last year as well. And I'm wondering where we are. Again, I sent those questions out about a month ago. I'm going to wait for those to come in a report then?
Rob can comment on water meters. I'm not sure if that's a report that's coming forward in the works, or if it's, if we need to direct it additionally.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have actually, we've, I've drafted a few reports to answer all these questions. So we will bring them, or my intention, as long as my boss puts them on the next agenda, is to have them at the March 13th meeting, to, to answer them more comprehensively than just one-off, bang, bang, bang. And the water meters will not be on the March 13th, because that's hopefully on the meeting afterwards. But the other, like, CSOs, talking, we're supposed to have a quarterly update on the next council meeting as well, which will answer a whole bunch of outstanding questions, such as where a lot of these capital projects are. To, to answer your question, just, just roughly though, is, is in the Liquid Waste Management Plan, which was adopted and endorsed by the province last year, is we have 50 years to spend $65 million. And that's about 1.5 kilometers a year of pipe that we'll put in. So looking at it every year, did we put in 1.5 kilometers this year or next year? I would look at it in five-year increments. Because sometimes, for instance, when we're looking at Argyle at the bottom, it's much larger pipe, so it's a lot more expensive. But then when you get to the top, on Melrose, for instance, where we've redone that whole section of pipe, the top end, we can get a lot more pipe in the ground for a lot cheaper than at the bottom, where it's a lot larger pipe. And then just a little plug on our CSO program is, we used to have five CSO outfalls, we now have four. And of the four in 2022, we, considering the precipitation levels, we reduced our actual CSO events by 43%. And the one, Melrose, or Coal Creek, or Tassis, I think it's got three different names, that creek, it, that's the one we've been focusing on for about the last six years. And we've reduced the CSO events and flows by reduced the CSO events and flows by 73%. So this is being effective.
So the, on the reserve reports, and I'm just wondering, they were listed, but there were no balances with that report? Is it possible to have a report come, sort of those, the balances, so we, everybody sort of knows where they are?
Absolutely. I think that's a next step. And I was going to ask that that did come with the report back to council on creating some of the reserves. I do note that some of the reserve balances are included in the budget as well.
Okay. And then the Counselor Solder was asking about debt. Debt servicing capacity means the combination of principal and interest that we pay, and you're not the total amount that we borrow. Debt servicing is not paying it all in one year, it's what we have to pay towards that debt each year, correct? Okay, just to clarify, because I think a lot of the public sort of miss out, it's, so our borrowing limit is, we can borrow quite a bit if we had to. It's a servicing that's...
Roughly $8 million more if we had to.
Not that we want to, but... So I'm just curious about the, this RCMP reserve came up at the Audit Committee, and maybe this is semantics, but it says that that RCMP contract surplus reserve, the purpose was as a contingency for use in major investigations, community policing, or other policing costs. In my mind, a purchase of a building at a massive amount of capital to repurpose that building, while the end purpose of the building is for community policing and policing costs, that's a capital expense. So maybe it's just semantics on my part, but I'm trying to separate, because the city has operational budgets, and you have capital budgets. And they're not 100% black and white, I get that, but I'm just curious what the thinking was there in that the stated purpose of this fund was, doesn't say anything about capital coming out of it.
Thank you, Roland. So council created that fund, and of course, council then is permitted to spend the fund on whatever council desires at that time. A conscious decision was made over the course of about a year of planning of that project, to not sit back and wait for a major crime to happen, but to invest proactively in public safety. There was, at the same time, a request from the public to invest in public safety uptown, specifically, an area where members of the public were feeling unsafe. So this is a model that was used in other communities, was working, having really great results in other communities. Council determined that rather, again, than sitting back and waiting for a major crime to happen, we would dedicate some of those funds to proactive public safety and that building, and the operation of the public safety building generally was the strategy that came to the top at that time, and council directed use of those funds for that purpose.
And the number of officers we're officially funding is down from 34 in 2017 to 32 currently?
We fund, we are required to provide 34 officers. We budget for 32 officers, because typically, we end up getting utilization of 30.5 officers, or closer to 30, it fluctuates every year. So as a result, we're not budgeting for the full complement, because we don't end up using the full complement. Rather than budgeting, taxing people, and then having it returned at the end of the year, we're budgeting for closer to the five-year average of what we're actually spending on RCMP, just like our staff are doing on several other budget lines.
So if we're funding to 30 point, sorry, we got 30.5 officers generally through the year, boots on the ground. We're funding for 32, so that's 1.5 officers, at around 100 and, I think, well, in 2017, it was about 160,000 a year, all costs in for boots on the ground. So that would imply a surplus of about quarter of a million, plus or minus, per year, funding it that way, is that correct?
Yep, and it's fluctuated over the years. There have been, when we were budgeting for 34 officers, we had one year where I think we had a $900,000 surplus back from the RCMP. So that's when we started taking a look and realizing that we were really over budgeting for RCMP, and, sorry, not over budgeting, but over taxing for the RCMP. We made an intentional change at that point, and it's something that we have to continue. This year's surplus was quite a bit smaller, I think, and Andrew will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was as a result of the new contract with RCMP, and possibly some retro. But it's something we're going to continue to evaluate over time, to make sure that budgeting for that 32 actually makes sense.
As, if I'm correct, there's not much of a surplus, I think, for 2022 for policing?
It was approximately $50,000 in 2022.
So we almost had the full complement last year of officers, I mean, not a...
It was a different year, though, because of the contract changes. Andrew, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so when we received the final contract, the changed contract with the collective agreement amounts, it was in mid to late March. So the budget figures that we had in the financial plan for 2022 reflected before that contract change, once we got the collective agreement. But at that point in our financial plan, would have resulted in an increase in the financial plan if we made changes to reflect the new collective agreement. So it remained at the same level prior to the new contract coming in. So still 32 under the old contract price, but the collective agreement came in, and there was less budget available, but understanding that we'd probably be underutilized, so we let that budget stand as is.
And 32 going forward, but at the new pay rate?
That's right, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Andrew.
So on the internal borrowing, because there's been a delay to IRF, which we'll make up, but there were repayment schedules, and the two that I'm aware of are for the pumper truck and the ladder truck, that the money was borrowed internally, but there were repayment schedules, and I'm presuming those payments are being made this year, those are not being suspended for a year, there, with respect to internal borrowing?
Andrew?
So with the IRF contributions that were needed to be increased due to the increased cost to the fire apparatus, those were planned back in 2021 and 2022, over a 20, 25-year period. But with that, this year, to get the financial plan lower, there's a one-time IRF reduction of $300,000, and then that repayment schedule is reset based on the remaining years for IRF. So it's adjusting that IRF payment to enable the tax rate to not be impacted by $300,000 in the fire services for 2023. Otherwise, that payment could be added back for just over that 1% increase in financial plan left you over here.
Thank you.
Last, well, sort of last thing. Get my sheets here again. So on, in 2017, there was a, the CAO's report, the relatively new CAO, discussing with council that there were three critical issues at the time, in February 8, 2017. Lack of growth, inadequate funding for infrastructural renewal, and reliance on the industrial tax base. And the direction from council on October 24, 2016, was for gradual redirection of heavy industry tax revenue to infrastructure and reserve funds. Approximate shift of 2% per year in operational dependency on industrial taxation sustained direction over a 12-year period. And the city infrastructure expenditures from taxation were to increase 300% over five years, from 770,000 in 2016 to 2.9 million in 2021. But what's happened is that going through is that the, in the 2017 to 2023 approved expenditures for capital totaled 5.5 million, what was supposed to have been, was the plan, was to contribute 16 million, which has left a 10.6 million infrastructure funding, the so-called infrastructure deficit. So, sort of going back to Counselor Haggard's comments earlier about increasing the capital fund to $1 million, I think you mentioned. Tax increases aren't popular, but this is a new council in your first year, and I agree with Counselor Haggard, or Committee Member Haggard, that you might take a bit of a pacing in public. I support you going higher than this budget, because we have to catch up. And there's no point blaming past councils or pointing fingers. We are where we are for a variety of reasons. But paying lip service to it isn't going to correct it. And council was warned in 2016 and 17, and there was a path set forward, and we deviated from it. And it's not going to get any less painful next year, or the year after, which is why, you know, I raised the issue. Inflation is still running pretty hot. So I'm hoping that council will, will have the courage to go, not just sort of give it lip service, maybe that's implied to say, but, but really dig in and, and start addressing this now, and take the pain, and hopefully someone won't throw rocks at me when I go for saying that I support a higher tax increase, but...
They'll throw rocks at us, Roland, not you.
But...
Thank you, Roland. And we refer to that plan as the ply plan, by the way. And it, you know, when Tim brought that forward, and he was a newer CAO at the time, council, of course, this is two councils go under my critan, we did adopt that plan. But in the very first budget following it, we did not follow the plan, because it was too challenging at the time. We got too much pushback from members of the public, and I say we, but I voted against that budget. But it was difficult to implement, and it's even more difficult today with an 8% budget increase on the table. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be moving forward with something like that today. So appreciate your comments. And I know that there is a strong desire on this council to actually get to work on the infrastructure that we need to be funding to address on the shortfall. And I think that conversation will continue to happen over the next few weeks. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Joseph, any questions? Okay. Well, there's only one other member of the public here, so I just want to check. Okay, then no other questions from the public. Would somebody like to move adjournment? Moved by Counselor Solder, seconded by Counselor Douglas on the motion, all in favor. Carrie, thank you.